Welcome, everybody, to CEC 15 Special Session Meeting. Tonight, we are going to be learning about the academic and social emotional learners screeners. We're going to get an educated educator perspective, and we are going to learn about parents' rights. So I thank you all so much for attending this evening. I'm going to allow the interpreters just to speak for a few minutes to make sure that if anyone needs interpretation, they are able to receive it.
Para interpretación en español, por favor marquen el tres cuatro siete nueve seis seis cuatro uno uno cuatro e ingresen el PIN uno nueve ocho uno seis cuatro siete tres nueve símbolo numeral. Nuevamente, para interpretación en español, por favor marquen el tres cuatro siete nueve seis seis cuatro uno uno cuatro e ingresen el PIN uno nueve ocho uno seis cuatro siete tres nueve símbolo numeral. Si quiere escuchar el audio en español pero prefiere permanecer en esta sección de Zoom, para ver la audiencia en su computadora, por favor, silencie la computadora y el volumen y marquen la línea de la conferencia en español en su teléfono. Una vez más, la línea de la conferencia en español es tres cuatro siete nueve seis seis cuatro uno uno cuatro e ingresa en el PIN uno nueve ocho uno seis cuatro siete tres nueve símbolo numeral. Gracias. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Can we have the Mandarin interpreter, please?
Okay, chindas, today's participants, guests, and all the parents. We have provided a plain English translation. If you need it, please call the phone number. Three four seven nine six six. Four one one is. ID is three eight, password is three eight six one one eight two one. Again, repeat it. Today, we're going to participate in the CEC 15 meeting. Parents, a plain English translation, and the line is three four seven nine six six. Four one one is. Password is three eight six. One 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 eight two one. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I will just now stop the screen share. And. Welcome, everybody. Thanks so much for being here tonight. I'm Camille Caseretti, the president of CEC 15, and we are really excited about the special session meeting that we're having with a lot of distinguished guests with us tonight. And I am just going to hand the floor over to Jody Dresner Alprin, who is going to start us off.
Thank you so much, Camille. Can you hear me?
We can.
Great. And thank you to CEC 15 for having us tonight and partnering with us on this event. We're really excited to be here. As Camille said, my name is Jody Dresner Alprin. I'm super happy to see so many folks here tonight. I know it's a very busy time of year. I am a teaching artist, a director, and a playwright, as well as a facilitator with Bank Street Center on Culture, Race, and Equity. I also sit on the steering committee of NYC Opt Out. I use she/her pronouns, and I am zooming in tonight from the unceded lands of the Lenape people. I am the parent of two public school children who came up through D-15 and are now a freshman and a senior in their high schools, respectively. I'm going to be here tonight, helping us get through our program, introducing our guests, hopefully keeping track of time, making sure that we're getting as much information to as many of you as possible in the time we have. If you have questions, we are asking, is the question and answer enabled on here, Camille? Is it possible to do that?
Yes, it is.
Okay, fantastic.
Everybody should be able to chat.
Great. So the chat, there's a separate Q and A that maybe somebody who's a host on the screen can look. If that pops up on your screen and you want to pop a question in to the thing that says specifically Q and A, folks on our end will hold on to those questions for when we have time. If that is not available, pop them in the chat, and folks on our end will hold on to them for when we have time. Hopefully, we'll have time to get to those. We also want to make sure that we are making and holding space for educators and teachers who have joined us tonight. And if that's you, and something comes up and you want to share your experience about the tests that we're speaking about this evening, you can go into the chat and privately message Amy Grob Forbes. Alternatively, if you feel like you have something to share, but you don't feel comfortable sharing it yourself and would prefer to do it anonymously, we're going to drop an email in the chat, and you can email that testimony question, whatever you have to share, to that email address, and somebody from our side will take care of lifting it into the space anonymously. So I just want to make sure, I'm just going to give a minute, we're gonna... There's the information, thank you, Kamala, in the chat about if you have something that you want to get. Did I go mute? How? So, okay, I'm sorry. All right. If you are, there's the information in the chat. If you want to raise something anonymously, if you're an educator, if you don't feel comfortable lifting it into the space, that email address is in our chat. We don't have a Q and A function tonight, but that's okay. Drop your questions into the chat, but just know, we might not get to them right away. We're going to try to go through in the order that we have things. All right, so why are we here tonight? Why have we come out in the middle of this season in December? Gotten on after a long day. First and foremost, we at NYC Opt Out wanted to make sure that we spread the word about the new standardized test, often referred to as screeners by the DOE that have been introduced this year, especially because we know that many parents don't even know that they exist or are happening in the schools. So we want parents to know the tests are happening and that parents have the right to decide whether their child will take them or not. So tonight, we're going to be asking, what do these tests measure? And is that what our schools need? What time do these tests take? And is that right for our schools? What is the impact of these tests on our students and teachers? And what happens to the data collected from these tests? We have a lot of fantastic experts who are going to take us through those questions as we go through, and I'm just going to set us up so we have a little bit of context for the evening. So this year, students in K through 10 have been mandated to take both ELA, English Language Arts, and math, new standardized assessments, three times a year, using tests that are either called MAP, I Ready, or Acadients. And all students have been mandated to take a social emotional screener called the DESA screener. So these tests are developed by the testing companies that make them and sell them to the city. The idea is that they'll be administered to students at the beginning of the year to see where they are, mid-year to see how they're progressing, and at the end of the year to see what they have achieved. These tests are in addition to the state tests that students in grades three through eight take at the end of the year. They are also in addition to any Regents tests, an AP test that middle and high schoolers might take at the end of courses. And this is also in addition to the NICE SLAT tests that our English as New Language learners must take. In many, many instances across the city, families have not been informed and do not know about the addition of these new mandated standardized tests. I'm just going to check the chat, make sure. Great. Are my interpreters going okay, not too fast for you? Great. Thank you. Thank you for that. Okay, so we know we have now these new mandated standardized tests that most students are having to take multiple times a year. We also know that teachers will be the first ones to tell you that assessing our students is important so that the teachers know where students are starting from in order to support their growth and their movement forward. And we're going to hear from some of those teachers tonight. And we're also going to hear some voices from early respondents to a survey that NYC Opt Out has to determine how these tests are actually happening in real classrooms this year. So teachers know assessment is important. But these new standardized tests, however, are not chosen by your child's teachers or school leadership communities. They are not aligned to the curriculum your school has chosen. They are aligned to the test makers' concept of appropriate curriculum, which happens to be the test makers' own curriculum, which they will happily sell to your school. So the data that your teacher gets back on your child can only be so useful if it's not assessing the things that your teacher needs to know to teach their curriculum and plan for their class. In fact, so far, much of the first round of tests measure how much of this entire school year, the one that ends in June, how much of this entire school year's curriculum your child knows at the start of the school year, the one where they're going to be taught that curriculum. So one thing that we really want to do is examine the amount of time that's necessary to administer these tests. So remember, they're not being administered once, they're not being administered twice, they have to be administered three times a year. So it's imperative, we understand the amount of time it will take to do that, and what that time comes at the expense of. So first of all, the sheer number of classroom minutes it will take for these tests to be administered is immense. I want to give you one example of that. For our youngest learners, they have to be assessed one-on-one, and that's a process that will take about 10 minutes per student in each subject area. So 20 minutes to do both math and ELA. So in an average kindergarten class of 24 students, the teacher will need to spend up to 480 minutes to assess the full class in both ELA and math. These minutes add up to 12 class periods for each assessment time, meaning 12 class periods in the beginning of the year, 12 class periods in the middle of the year, and 12 class periods at the end of the year, which means that there are 36 class periods in the year where the teacher of a kindergarten classroom must be engaged in one-on-one assessment and therefore is not with the 23 other students in the class not being currently assessed, where those students must work independently or play games without their teacher's support. This is happening in here where we're welcoming children back from remote and hybrid learning, supporting their mental health, helping them grow social skills that they may not have been as able to work on last year, and engaging the whole child. So this is a huge loss of classroom time between teachers and their students. The additional burden, and this is also places on teachers and administrator, can be looked at through time lost in other areas of their job. So one elementary school administrator reports to us that between training for the new systems and in elementary school because of the age range that it covers, they might be training two kinds of tests, both Acadians and MAP. So between the training for the new systems, the data entry after the administration of the test, and the reading of the data from those tests, 50% of this administrator's time was spent on the test and not on any of her other job responsibilities, which we know, especially this year, are so great in our schools. So even in the upper grades, right, that was an example about our youngest learners, but even in the upper grades where students can take the tests online sort of more independently, we have had early respondents to our survey, which we're going to share with you later tonight. And in those early respondents, all of the respondents so far have reported that they have experienced tech issues because kids are taking the tests online that have made testing harder, impossible, or take more time than it is supposed to. They have all reported that the time spent on the test interfered with trauma-informed practices in the classroom and that the test took away time that otherwise they would have spent offering individualized support to students. The majority of early respondents to our survey report that children lost instructional time while teachers administered the test to students individually, that students showed signs of stress because they were being tested on end-of-year benchmarks at the beginning of the year before they had been taught that content, that the respondents, the majority respondents, found the suggested time constraints for students' response to be developmentally inappropriate, which placed more stress on students in an already stressful year, and that it took time away from community-building activities. So that is just one little glimpse at the real toll time-wise that the tests are taking in our classrooms. And another thing that we want to look at is, that's really important, is the issue of privacy around the data. And we're very lucky that Lainey Hansen is here and will be telling us more about this later tonight, but we just want to set the stage. It's important to know that so far, the DOE has been very unclear about what happens to our kids' data when they take these tests and how that data is going to be used. So the private testing company has access to the data, and maybe they're sharing it with central at DOE. So will that data be used to generate categories or labels for students? Is it going to be used to make predictions of what scores your five-year-old will get on their eighth-grade test or on the SAT? Will these data be allowed for use in middle and high school admissions? Will it be somehow allowed for GNT programs for tracking within schools? And remember, I said that there was another screener that was about mental health? Maybe I didn't say that. There's an additional screener that's about mental health that everybody's taking, right? That one that I said was called the DESA. We don't know what's happening with that data. Are our mental health labels being assigned to children based on this DESA screener that's being done? Who is going to be able to see that data about our kids? And with all of this data, what are the clear and effective ways that resources, both monetary and human resources, will be appropriately attached to the results to be distributed and used? So I just want to say, as we navigate the pandemic, we at NYC Opt Out, no, there's been a lot of talk about learning loss, and yes, I'm putting it in quotes, and that some DOE officials will tell us that these new mandated standardized tests are necessary to measure that loss. But I want to be really clear that these tests have been in the works for years before the pandemic, and this is perhaps being seen as an opportunity to get them into our classrooms. We at NYC Opt Out believe that every student should be welcomed into school and assessed as the whole child that they are, standing fully in their own humanity, carrying with them all the trauma and the loss of the last two years, as well as all of the learning and growth that they have done in that same timeframe, which we know they have. We do not believe that adding standardized tests that take time away from classroom instruction, hinder trauma-informed instruction, are not culturally responsive, have technology issues, have data and privacy concerns, and cost a great deal are the way to welcome, support, assess, and help grow each child in their full humanity. So that is the stage that we want to set to hear from this great panel of experts that we have tonight. I want to remind especially our teachers, educators, and administrators who are joining us tonight. If you have something that you want to share, you can message it to us in the chat. There's also an email address if you feel more comfortable sharing it with us anonymously, but we want to make sure that we're creating space for you to share your experience so far. So the first thing that we're going to look at are the Acadians tests. And Jessica Smith is joining us to let us know more about these tests. Jessica has taught third, fourth, and fifth grades in New York City Public Schools since 2004. She has a degree in math leadership from Bank Street College and is a teaching fellow with Math for America. And she is also the parent of a kindergartner at Brooklyn New School. I'm going to turn it over to Jessica to let us know more about Acadians.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. So I'm going to talk about Acadians, which is one of the three companies that was given a contract to provide these tests to the DOE for this school year. And I'm going to focus mostly on the math portion because, as you heard, I'm a math person. And I have some samples of the tests that I'm going to share. And, but I wanted to put out, if people, you know, wanted to see samples from reading or from a different grade level, you know, feel free to message me privately or reach out. I'm happy to share other materials, but I had to, you know, try to streamline here. So. So Acadians Learning, as I said, it's a corporation. It was founded in 2002. They offer reading and math tests, data analysis, and professional development. Acadians Math specifically was created as a, this is from their website, a standardized, universal screening and progress monitoring assessment. It was officially released in July 2019, so it's pretty recent. There, it's for grades K to six, so you won't see it really in middle and high schools. If your child is a middle schooler or high schooler, they probably did not take the Acadians. And its stated purpose is to identify students who might be at risk for math difficulties. It's designed to be given three times a year, as Jody mentioned, the beginning, middle, and end of the year. And as she also mentioned, it uses grade-level materials. So this means that students in second grade are asked questions based on end-of-second grade standards. So even though its purpose is to look at for students who might be behind, it's asking them questions based on what they're supposed to be taught in the current school year. Some, I, so I helped administer this at my own school. And so I'm going to give some information about the administration process. As Jody mentioned, for kindergartners and first graders, most of the assessment, math assessment is done one-on-one. And then in second through fifth grade, it's done with the whole class at the same time. Test questions may not be read aloud for students in grades to, starting in grade two. And all the assessments are timed. And because Acadians Math is a standardized test, they make very explicit and emphasize in their instructions that it's very important that the administration is uniform. And so the times have to be adhered to strictly. When you're administering it, you're given a script. You can't make any other comments or extra prompts for students. And there are very few approved accommodations for students with special needs, specifically really only if they have like a physical disability. As Jody also mentioned, you know, there, a lot of schools had different plans for how they were going to administer it this the first time around. So like at my school, for example, we didn't want to overly burden classroom teachers who are trying to, you know, teach and build community and all of that. And so we chose to use out-of-classroom teachers, like our sets teacher, our English as a New Language teacher, our coach, substitutes, you know. And so, of course, the balance of that is those people have jobs as well that they were not able to do during that time, or if the school hired subs, of course, that comes out of the budget. And just as, also to give a sense of the timeframe, I can say at my own school, we have about 250 students. And with four, it took four staff members, about 13 days, to complete the Acadians reading and math tests that included preparing the materials and getting trained, administering the assessments, doing makeups for students who are absent, scoring, and then entering the data. So that's about 250 staff hours for one round of administration. And then we're supposed to be doing the next round of administration in January. So I'm going to focus in on the second grade test, I figured, just because that's sort of in the middle. And so it has two parts. There's a computation part and then concepts and applications is what they call it. And they're both timed. Computation, there's two one-page worksheets, two minutes each. Concepts and applications, three pages, 16 problems total, and the students have five minutes to complete. So this is a sample of a second-grade computation test. They're instructed to start with the first problem and continue working across the page and try each problem, but move on if they're unable to solve. And I know one of the challenges at my school when we gave this is that typically in second grade, we don't notate addition and subtraction problems in this vertical way. And so that was something new for our students. The scoring for the computation portion is also, the scoring is, you know, very standardized. There's no, like, sort of, it doesn't matter how they solved it. There's no, you know, acknowledgement of like different strategies that were used or anything. It's just about the answer. And students get one point for each digit that's correct in their answer. So for instance, if you look at problem five over on the right, an answer of, let's say, eighty-two would get zero points. An answer of thirteen would get one point because the three in the one's place is correct digit. And an answer of ninety-three would get two points because both digits are correct. And then you would just add those all up. Then we have the concepts and applications. So they have five minutes to complete these three pages. This is kind of just an overview of the three pages, and then I'm going to zoom in so you can, because I know this is very small. So this is the first page. You can see it has six problems. There's, there, you know, there's a range of topics, right? So you see a little bit of fractions, comparing numbers, measurement, time, a lot of story problems, a lot of language. And again, students needed to read this on their own if they weren't able to read it, or if they asked, like, what a word, you know, you just say, well, do the best you can. This is the second page, again, a range of problems in different content areas. And then this is the, this is the final page. And so you see here, place value, again, with time. Story problem involving subtraction and money. And it was interesting as a teacher to see, for example, that there were a couple of different questions about time. Whereas although time is in the standards for second grade, it's typically not emphasized to that degree. And then the scoring for concepts and applications works the same way. You're just looking at the answer, and students get one point for each correct digit. So for example, that first problem, how many circles are there in total? The correct answer was four plus four plus four plus four equals sixteen. So students could get up to a total of six points for that question, depending on how many digits were correct in their answer. I wasn't able to get a score report for the math technical difficulties, but this is a score report for reading, and it's for parents. If your child took the Acadian screener at their school, this score report should be available. My understanding is that schools are not automatically sharing these score reports, but if you ask for it, they should be able to provide it because it is available in the system. This reading score report looks like this. You see these sort of bars for the different portions of the reading test. There's a composite score, and then the score for the different portions of the test. And then there's a little key at the bottom that tells you what the portions, you know, what they are, those acronyms. So phoneme segmentation fluency, nonsense word fluency. And then it also has a key for the color coding. So the four levels are well below benchmark, where it says likely to need intensive support, below benchmark, likely to need strategic support, at benchmark, likely to need core support, and above benchmark, likely to need core support. And so that is an overview of Acadians. Thank you.
Jessica, thank you so much. I think that is super eye-opening for us to be able to see, like, those of us who are not in the classroom and getting to do that. So I really appreciate you with all of the visual aids as well for people to get a sense of that. So as, as has been mentioned, the Acadians is one version of the test that's being used in schools. And there's also the MAP test, and we wanted to hear about that, make sure that we got information about that as well. So we have another phenomenal teacher with us tonight, Evelyn Israel. Evelyn is in her eighth year teaching high school math. We've got the math teachers in the house, which is very exciting. For the past three years, she has For the past three years, she has taught at Humanities Prep, which is a public high school in Chelsea. Evelyn is a Master Teacher Fellow with the organization Math for America, and I'm going to turn it over to Evelyn now.
Hi, everyone. So my school Humanities Prep is part of a consortium of schools that have a waiver from state, most state testing requirements. Our students only take the English Regents, and otherwise they, for high school graduation, they take, they write papers or do projects to show competence, like to show what they know and what they've learned in each major subject area. So that's just a little bit of context. Because testing in general is not in alignment with what my school is trying to do with students in terms of looking at them holistically, not sort of narrowing them down to a single number or a single like this person that is seventh, seventh grader level, stuff like that. So the, this consortium of schools actually asked if we could have a waiver from the exam and do our own assessment that we'd be able to look at student work and see their actual thinking on the page. Like it was said earlier, the tests all happened on the computer. And we got to see about ten sample questions by looking at this, like one sample we could look at. Otherwise, like, they change the questions based on students getting earlier questions right or wrong. So they like increased or decreased the level of difficulty. So I didn't see pretty much any of the questions that my students looked at. So we wanted to give something where we could see their thinking and do what our school does, which is work from an asset model, like what do students know, what information did they have rather than deficit? What are the things they're missing so that we can build on what they already know? But we, our school and our superintendent were actually told that there would be consequences for us if we didn't follow through on the testing. So it wasn't an option for us to opt out as a school. There were some students who didn't show up on the days we tested, either on purpose or by accident. We just didn't put in their data because what actually ended up happening was the day before we were supposed, we had planned to give the exams. One of our teachers tested positive for COVID, and so then everyone had to quarantine for one day and unvaccinated students had to quarantine for ten days. So our only chance then to give the test was on the two days that they came back when, when the whole class was back from their quarantine, which we would have loved to give them something where they could interact with each other, being back together again, something more engaging, but our only option was to give the exam on that day, those two days. But like I said, some students weren't there. There wasn't another day. So like, they didn't take the test. Nothing seems to have happened. So just from hearing that some people are being told that they can't opt out of the test for their kids, I haven't seen any sort of individual consequences for a student not taking the exam. We were just told as a school, we would face consequences. I'm really lucky to be in a school that's aligned with my values on teaching and where the administration trusts us to assess our own students to see like what things we need to know about what they know and don't know and figure out next steps. And so we're not getting, I'm not getting pushed from my administration to like teach toward this test or to judge students based on it or anything like that, which I really appreciate. And I, I would be worried for schools that that might be the case at some schools. In addition to like, well, I'll show in a minute. Yeah, but just there might be pressure from outside, which I luckily don't have. Apparently, one of the things that was mentioned was that the results would come back speedily. And that was like part of why we were doing this online thing. We took, they took the test over a month ago, and right now we have maybe about half of our students' results back. And I'll show you like just a sample student without their name. There's no details to this. We were told that we would be getting like a bullet by bullet thing of their, like of different standards. I haven't seen that anywhere yet. So like for this student, this is the information that I have right now, which to me is not particularly helpful in knowing how to teach them tomorrow or the next day. And I'm missing information for about half the students. One thing, we had about a one or two hour training on, that was mostly on how to give the exam because it was actually like pretty complicated, like they said. Like I, after the training, I spent a few hours on my own, making sure I understood it. So then I could like explain that to the other math teachers. It was not a very intuitive system, even from the teacher's side. And also was a bit complicated on the student's side. But that training was mostly on how to give it and like a few minutes were spent saying like, this is what results might look like. And we were talking at one point about the math practice standards in the training, which are like finding patterns, like things that are useful all through math, not specific to a grade, perseverance and problem solving. And the leader seemed to be talking about that. So I was like, oh, how is that going to be information we get from this exam? And her response was, no, that would be assessment we would do on our own. So some of these skills that I do really care about knowing about, this test wasn't going to help. This is what the results look like for my students overall. They're telling me like what percentile my students are in. And for the most part, the results are confirming what I've already seen with my students, which in terms of which students are struggling in the classroom and which students are like doing well and not needing a lot of support. Mostly, I've been able to figure that out from observing my students and their work. And this just sort of says a similar thing to that. And then the other thing is, one of my students actually found this, like, I don't know if I was sent it, but this is for the MAP test, like how they're translating the scores. So theoretically, my student's score can land them like anywhere between K and twelfth grade, which luckily, again, for my school, like, we're not going to see a student who, it says they're at a third grade level in math and say like, oh, that student can't do anything, that student needs to be in boring remediation classes until they can figure out something out, you know. But I would also be worried that students might experience that if their school is less understanding of sort of a whole child mentality. And that if parents or students were to see these score reports and see a great equivalency, that that could be really damaging to a student's self-esteem. That's pretty much everything.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Evelyn. Thank you for sharing that. It's so interesting, different tests, but a lot of overlap, what we, what Jessica was sharing with us. And also so many of the issues that we knew we were looking out for already. The amount of time that you guys are having to spend, the resources that are being spent, the usefulness or not of these tests, and also the very real impact they're having on students and their own concept of themselves as learners and their mental health at this really key moment and everything that's been going on in our world. So thank you so much for sharing that with us. The next person we're going to hear from, we're going to hear about the third test. So we've heard Acadians, we've heard MAP. Now we're going to hear about iReady. This is testimony from a D fifteen special educator who's teaching in a fourth grade ICT classroom. This is anonymous testimony. As we know, teachers don't always feel that they can speak freely, especially in front of the DOE. So this was submitted anonymously for you. But as we listen to this teacher's perspective, I want us to keep in mind this quote from Robert Slavin, who is the Director of the Center for Research and Reform in Education at Johns Hopkins University. And he says, research, research finds that benchmark assessments, which all three of these tests are, benchmark assessments do not make any difference in achievement. In a rational world, these findings would put an end to benchmark assessments, at least as they are used now. The average outcomes are just, are not just small, they are zero. They use up a lot of student time and district money. Interim assessments fall into the enormous category of educational interventions that are simple, compelling and wrong. Yes, teachers need to know what students are learning and what is needed to improve it, but they have available many more tools that are far more sensitive, useful, timely and tied to actions teachers can take. So keeping that in mind, we're going to have to share this testimony from our, our D fifteen educator, New York City Opt Out co-founder Kamala Carmen, who is a parent to a current NYC public school student as well as a graduate of the public schools, who is a mechanical engineering student in college despite having opted out of all state testing. So we, I will turn it over to you to share the D fifteen educators' testimony on iReady.
Thank you, Jody. I just want to make one little correction is that Robert Slavin is no longer the director of that Johns Hopkins program because he's no longer alive, but he, he was. I also want to just preface before I start this that I am reading this teacher's testimony because so many teachers have reached out to us and told us they are, they do not feel that they can speak publicly. And this is not just teachers, it's administrators, principals, you know, who are threatened if they so much as use their judgment as a professional and say, I don't think these assessments are appropriate or useful in my practice. I think that's shameful. I know there are several people on here from DOE, including some from pretty high up. I hope you're listening to that. Okay, I will read what this teacher sent in. What is wrong with iReady? Isn't it great to have a test that all children can take that tells us their strengths and weaknesses? This is an awesome idea. The problem is that iReady does not do this. iReady provides no specific information, rather a general sense of where a particular child, based on a score, may lie. In contrast, when a teacher grades a test that they have designed on a specific unit in math, they can see the method the student used to solve a problem and where exactly an error occurred and what that indicates. Math test question one, the student got it correct. Yay! No more nut, no more time is needed for this concept. Except that while they got it correct, the student did the multiplication problem using repeated addition. Repeated addition is a fine strategy, but importantly, the teacher now knows this child's next step does not have to do with understanding multiplication, but with learning more efficient strategies to move them forward in their thinking. iReady would have marked that question correct and moved on. Conversely, math question two is marked incorrect by iReady, and indeed, the final answer is wrong. The teacher's test, however, shows that this child understands the concept perfectly, but suffered from errors in computation. Will the teacher need to hold a small group about ways to check answers? Sure. Maybe a lesson in estimating for reasonability? Yes. But repeated instruction on the main concept? Unnecessary and redundant. The same concepts hold true for reading. An answer is correct or incorrect, but what does this tell us about the next steps and instruction? With teacher-designed tests, we know which particular skill we are testing for and are able to not only figure out whether it is mastered, but more importantly, where, why and how any misunderstanding is happening. Right and wrong, yes and no, black and white. This is not how children work. They live and learn in all the areas in between, areas that cannot be measured by a standardized, computerized test. So another idea, let's trust our teachers. Let's let them use the standards to make sure their children are learning grade-level concepts while meeting the needs of students who need more support. Let's trust their expertise, education and constant professional development to allow them to do the job they are trained to do. And let's take the massive amounts of money wasted on these tests to provide resources, counseling supports and community support for our children and their families. Thank you.
Thank you so much for sharing that. Such an echo of what we're already hearing, like we, we're hearing a lot of commonalities between the three different modes of testing. None of, none of them inspiring a lot of confidence in, in the use of, of these tests. So that is something that we want, that we want to keep in mind and we'll hear and we'll be able to take some of the questions that have come up from all of you a little bit later. But I want to shift our focus a little bit right now because we do also have those DESA screeners, which every student is being required to have filled out about them in schools. Those are the social emotional screeners. Sorry if you hear a little noise. I have a puppy in the background. But we have Sarah, who's going to help us understand the DESA screeners a little bit more tonight. Sarah Kotzen is a licensed clinical social worker with a doctorate in social work. She's a trauma therapist in private practice, as well as an adjunct professor at BMCC and Lehman College. For the last seven years, she's been researching and writing about the need for social and emotional learning programs to include a trauma-informed anti-racist lens. She is also the parent of three New York City public school children in districts five and six. We're so happy to have Sarah illuminate some of the DESA for us tonight.
Thank you so much. I'll share my screen and, and and hopefully do this right. Okay. So, so what, what is the DESA? No, I apologize. I was on another work meeting. So if anything is repeated, I'm, I'll try and jump to the parts. My husband texted me what was said. It stands for the DEVERU Student Strengths Assessment. It's a survey that, as you said, the teachers fill out for every student, which I did not understand fully, even though this was my field. So I figure a lot of parents may not realize that, that it's not an interview style. It's a teacher filling it out for the student. The DOE purchased this from Aperture. The DESA comes with the SEL curriculum. The DESA data is supposed to lead up to, the SEL can be applied to, quote, provide targeted, highly responsive support to each individual. That came from the, the letter that we all got some version of from our school. So what is this in response to? Well, there's an increase of children exposed to trauma. And we know this, trauma existed pre-pandemic. And I've been studying this for seven or eight years, way before the pandemic. But we all know that it's increased exponentially with the pandemic, with loss, with jobs, with, with deaths, with increase in poverty, with just all the things that everybody knows in this room that I don't even need to list. The effects of trauma show up at school. Children spend most of, that is the epicenter of most children's lives. And that is a place where children can feel really safe. And so sometimes that's where things are going to, they're going to come up and they're going to affect the child individually, they're going to affect the class and can have an impact on academics. So the DOE addressing the social and emotional, I, I see this as the way to say, we're doing something. And yet, it all sounds, it all sounds good. But what, what is it really? So the SELs fundamentally lack a systemic lens. So these eight competencies that may have also been in your letter, they were designed by educational companies, not mental health clinicians. And I think that's really important because these are not things that social workers define. So the other word that popped up that's really important to, to unpack, I think, is that the word strength-based keeps getting thrown around. So strength-based is a social work theory that we hold dear. And it is, part of it is, yes, about positive framing and positive skills, but that is not the extent of it. It's really based on, it's, it's based on the environment. So looking at a person in their environment, that is how a strength, strength-based lens functions. It's not about a bright side or optimism or good school. So it's really being co-opted, this term, to sound to sound good, but it really isn't meaning what it was originally designed to be. SEL programs are not anti-racist, and they are not trauma-informed, yet they are assumed to be. And I hear this all the time, that we are going to address trauma with SELs. SEL companies will not tell you that they address trauma, but I have yet to hear them correct somebody when they say that they do. So the problem with it not addressing racism and not addressing trauma is that then, if you take away the system, you are only looking at a person within a very, very small box. And so then, the child is responsible. So if a child's behavior is rooted in their environment, which of course, we know it is, because that's how humans work. We're not just heads on top of bodies. So because their behavior will come out of that, if the environment is not looked at and considered, you don't have to know it all, but if it's not considered, then all responsibility and blame falls on that child in that little space of the classroom. And therefore, they're blamed for things that are beyond their control. So if behavior is coming out of loss, trauma, any number of things that a child may be dealing with, then they are blamed for that, that is a re-traumatization. And children should never be blamed for trauma that they are not responsible for. So what is the cost of this? The cost is time. These surveys are 40 questions for the... I believe it's 40 for the K through 8, 43 questions for the grade 9 through 12. And these are given three times a year, which maybe you already heard this. That's a lot of time in a teacher's day. The morale. We know, research shows that good teachers provide the opportunity where children can thrive and that all of this trauma we are talking about can be addressed. Like, schools provide, ideally, healthy boundaries, built-in community, chance for nurturing, healthy expectations. All of these things that get lost if the teacher is being sidetracked to things that are not within their purview and not within their skill set. The wrong answers. And I think this is so important to understand that there was... The teachers I spoke to said there was insufficient training. So we're going to look at some of the questions specifically, but there is a lot of room for implicit bias. There's a lot of room for interpretation. There's no option to say, "This is not applicable to my situation," or "this child." And again, lacking cultural lens, lacking a trauma lens, which goes back to, as I said, blaming on the child. Not looking at multilanguage learners, not looking at children with learning different learning styles. So one of the examples I give is that if a child showed up with hives and a doctor said, "You're going to have, I'm going to give you these vitamins, because vitamins are really good for kids." And then, the hives don't go away. Well, we didn't test for a food allergy. Because that is the thing. If a behavior shows up and an SEL is not designed to treat that behavior, the behavior is not going to go away. And so then, whose fault is it? Well, it must be the teacher for not doing the SEL right, or it must be the student. And we've never looked at the root of the problem. And then, and you all know, hopefully, how much money this costs. And that money could go, instead of straining teachers and harming students, to actual mental health, to actual trauma support. So this is a screenshot from the K through 8 DESA. So I'm not going to go through all of them, but I pulled out a few that are just... So one of the things is, so during the past four weeks, how often did the child... So one example, get along with different types of people. I'm sure if we polled people in this room, many of you would have a different definition of what different types of people meant. So that's unclear. Do children say good things about themselves? Well, this lacks the multicultural lens. Because in many cultures, bragging about yourself would not be a benefit and a skill. So it's a very Western lens, very narrow one at that. And maybe humility is what's valued. So that's not going to show up. Same, accepting, responsive, good judgment is also really... There's a lot of room for bias there. And politeness, that was the other one. Acting respectfully in a game. Not to mention, so this is also, there's no option to say, "I'm going to skip this question." What about a teacher who doesn't see a child in competition or play a game? And they can't opt out of that question? And so some of the... I wanted to also root this, using the 9 through 12. I wanted to root this with like, a hypothetical, but very real possible person. So we have this, you have a 15-year-old boy who his mother is working to keep the family afloat, and he, the older child, is responsible for younger siblings. This is a very common situation. And one that we want to support, and want to help. So let's say that this child is not... So one of the questions was, "Does the child or does the student do the right thing in a difficult situation?" Well, if a ninth-grade ELA teacher is seeing this student and trying to ask himself this question, well, maybe the answer would be no. Maybe he doesn't do the right thing. Maybe he doesn't come into class on time. Maybe he doesn't have his books out and do exactly what the teacher said. So then, the answer would be no. But maybe if we actually knew this child, and he is, like I said, supporting younger siblings and getting into school on time in a difficult situation, well, then, in fact, the answer would be, yes, he frequently does the right thing in a difficult situation. And same with the... There's one, "Does the child, does the student keep trying when unsuccessful?" So my question is, at what? At a math problem, at an ELA question, rough draft? Maybe not. Maybe he's exhausted. Maybe anxiety is keeping him up at night because he's not sure if he's going to have housing tomorrow. But what about getting his younger sister breakfast every day? Maybe he keeps trying when he is unsuccessful. Now, the teacher who doesn't know all of that is going to answer in one way. But let's say the teacher does know all that. And I've talked to teachers who do. Well, then, they're not going to want to punish this student, right? So they're going to say, maybe the answer, the way that I just answered with, "Yes, he does the right thing in a difficult situation. Yes, he keeps trying when successful, when unsuccessful." Well, so then, what has this... What has this data given you? Absolutely nothing. Because the same student with two different teachers is going to have a completely different score, which tells us nothing. And are we talking about mental health? They'll tell you no, because we are teachers. These are teachers giving this who do not have a license in mental health. So it cannot be a mental health diagnostic. That's what I've been told by the social workers at my kid's school. It's not a mental health diagnostic. Okay, so why is it confidential if it's not a mental health diagnostic? So keeping in mind, schools could benefit, will benefit, would benefit from actual support that addresses all of the things that we know our students are struggling with. And if teachers could do what they were trained to do and what they are great at, and mental health clinicians could do what we are trained to do, great at, want to do, we could address. Like, there's tons of evidence-based approaches that are trauma-informed and anti-racist. SELs are neither. Teachers welcome partnerships from mental health staff. We could hire more of them. $18 million would probably hire a lot. So... And the other thing is, where are these answers going to end up? And how could they be used? I can't find a way of how they could be used in a beneficial way, as I've said. I could think of a lot of ways they could be harmful. It's unclear. Aperture, this company that we've paid $18 million to, will have all the data for all of our students. The DOE will also have this data, not secured, as we know. And I've linked it to a Chalkbeat article that highlights that. And how could future school applications be impacted by former teachers' opinions? So if there is some bias, or there is a teacher who doesn't have the whole picture, or there is a teacher who answers really honestly and does their best, but that information, another school is like, "Well, I don't know if I want to take in this student who doesn't try very hard." And then, I've already said this. So if this is not mental health, are we judging kids' personality? Because we're not looking at anything beyond that. Thank you so much.
Sarah, thank you so much. I think that was such an eye-opener for so many of us who haven't had, been able to see the nitty-gritty of it. And also sets us up so well for our next expert with this idea of what happens to this data and how is it going to be used around our children. This is a huge question, really, really important. And we couldn't have anybody better than Laney Hampson joining us, who is the Class Size Matter founder and executive director, was a public school parent for 15 years. She also co-founded and co-chairs the Parent Coalition for Student Privacy, which is a project of Class Size Matter. PCSP has released two toolkits, one for parents and one for educators, on how to better protect student privacy. Laney also sits on the Board of the Network for Public Education, has testified before Congress, appeared on too many television shows to name, regularly is named on Technology and Education Leaders List, and is a great friend to NYC Opt-Out. So we're so thrilled to have her here tonight to help us understand the importance of this data.
Thank you. Thank you for inviting me. Thank you, Jody. I just want to correct one thing. I wasn't personally invited to testify before Congress. My co-chair at the time, Rachel Stickland...
Well, what are they waiting for? I was saying, now they need to have you.
Well, yeah, I don't think...
I'm just manifesting it.
It was my co-chair that was invited to speak. But anyway, I'm going to share my screen, if that's okay. I wish I knew, could answer all your questions. The problem is that we don't know a lot about how this data's been going to be used and how it's going to be secured and kept safe. Unfortunately, even though there was a law that was passed in 2014, a state law, that would have required a lot more transparency than we actually have around the protection and the use of personal student data. So I'm assuming that you can see my screen now, is that right? Yes? Okay. So I'm going to go right into it. There's multiple privacy concerns that we have and that parents have with the personal student data collected by many of these online programs and apps in New York City schools. As I mentioned, there was a law passed in 2014 that was supposed to post the privacy provisions of all agreements with vendors that have access to personal student data on the DOE website. These privacy protections were in an addendum to the contracts that was called the Parent Bill of Rights, or the PBOR. Yet, on the relevant DOE webpage, there is no information posted for scores of apps that have been assigned to students and that collect their data. The law also requires that all this data is supposed to be encrypted in motion and at rest. And yet, we've had several different breaches of personal student data in recent years in New York City. So we know that the DOE is not strongly complying with that aspect of the law either. Now, I've looked at DESA in particular, which is a screener that's produced by a for-profit company called Aperture, headquartered in South Carolina, with only about 40 employees. I looked at the privacy page of Aperture, and they provide more information for California users because California has stronger privacy protection laws. And it says, "Among the data the company may collect are grades, transcripts, class lists, student schedules, identification, financial information, and/or disciplinary records." The Parent Bill of Rights posted on the DOE page does not include any prohibition against the selling or commercial use of the data, which is required under state law that this is prohibited. The PEP contract that we looked at, the contract that was approved by the PEP, said that Aperture's program also includes an intervention-tracking tool that offers specialized intervention recommendations. And we don't really know very much about that, what teachers or schools are learning and what specific interventions are supposed to flow from the data. However, we believe that these recommendations are likely based upon a proprietary black box algorithm, which many people have looked at over the years and believe that many of these algorithms can be invasive, biased, unreliable, and have damaging effects on students. A friend of mine also looked at... The guy who sold Aperture to DOE, he brags about this in his LinkedIn profile. You can see that he says "strong, resilient NYC" right under his name. He previously worked at Pearson as the Program Director from 2013 to 2016, overseeing the development and delivery of high-stakes and formative assessments for all New York City schools. I looked at iReady. iReady is produced by a company called Curriculum Associates LLC. There is a Parent Bill of Rights with partial information on the DOE website. However, it does not say that the data will not be sold or used for commercial purposes, nor does it say when the data will be deleted, which is also required in state law, and which is very, very important. Because often, the companies keep this data for years after the contracts have lapsed, and they get very, very sloppy with it. And often, the data actually breaches, which actually happened with Pearson not that long ago. And then, I have a quote from it, basically just saying, which it says in all these DOE contracts that are posted, that the data will be deleted when the contract with the company lapses, but doesn't say when that is. And it implies that as long as there's any contract with the company, they can keep all the data from all the different apps that they have sold to DOE over time, which is really unfortunate. iReady was graded at 60% from Common Sense Media in terms of answering the question, is data sold? And 65% on commercialization of data. It says users, it's not sold or rented to third parties, and users can opt out of the disclosure or sale of their data to third parties. I don't know whether parents in New York City are going to be given that, right? They can send marketing messages. Unclear if they use behavioral advertising. Unclear whether you can opt out of marketing communications. And what I found very interesting is it says it's... iReady is not intended to be used for kids under 13 because there's special protections for kids under 13 according to a federal law called COPA. And I think it may be used. I mean, you guys can tell me if it's being used with kids under 13. Yeah, well, it's not supposed to be. What about the MAP test? It's produced by a company, a nonprofit company called NWEA. There's no Parent Bill of Rights or privacy information on the DOE website, so we don't have any idea about how the information may be protected or used. One interesting thing is that we have heard, and MAP, NWEA claims that the pattern of clicks that a student uses when they're taking these tests will be interpreted in terms of their student engagement. And teachers will be able to use this information to identify students who may benefit from social-emotional learning intervention. So that's another concern that many people have. It looks like that's another algorithm that may be unreliable and diagnose students as disengaged if they click on answers too quickly. And this happened to a colleague of mine whose kid in Colorado was diagnosed as disengaged because he answered the questions too quickly. Common Sense Media has not analyzed the privacy protections of the MAP test. What about Acadians? There's, again, very little that we know about it. There's no information on the DOE website, no Parent Bill of Rights, no information about how the data will be protected or used. And again, Common Sense has not analyzed its privacy protections. There's something called the Student Privacy Pledge that was put out a couple of years ago and has been updated. It's created by the Future Privacy Forum and the software industry. These are both organizations which actually support the use of ed tech and get a lot of money from the Gates Foundation and other groups that really want to expand the use of online learning and online assessments. However, neither Aperture nor NWEA nor Acadians have signed the Student Privacy Pledge, which has a lot of very common sense and basic protections on student data, including no sale of data, no use of commercial purposes. And this is despite the fact that over 222 ed tech companies have signed on to the pledge. So for more, this is all that I have. For more information on student privacy, you can check out, we have a very luminous spreadsheet about many of the apps that DOE has offered to schools to use. There are literally hundreds of them. And many of them, we have no information about at all, but we've looked at some of their privacy policies online, and we've looked at whether Common Sense have graded them, and some of them get very low grades for privacy. You can also email us at info@studentprivacy.org. Check out our Facebook page and our website. So that's it.
Thank you so much. That was a lot of information. And I know that it is leaving me wondering what we all should be doing. And I know that it is leaving me wondering what we all should be doing. It, it is lighting a fire in me around action. I know that we have had questions in the chat, that's my dog, that we have had questions in the chat already about, with both, with all of these assessments, with the academic screeners, with the, the social, emotional ones. What should we be doing? And I can think of no better person to bring on to help us understand that than our great friend Joanna Garcia. We are, New York City Opt Out are so lucky. As you can tell from the, the panelists that we have had tonight to work with dedicated, smart, and passionate parent and educator organizers. And even among them, Joanna stands out as our superstar. She is a former president of C E six, C E C six in Upper Manhattan. She has been an unrelenting advocate for the city schoolchildren, walking more than 100 miles from here to Albany to demand full funding for schools, appearing as a plaintiff on lawsuits demanding that class size be lowered and that charter schools be accountable for their marketing practices, and so many more things. She is a particular champion for children with dyslexia and other learning differences, and outspoken about institutional practices and approaches, including high stakes standardized testing that perpetuate racial and socioeconomic inequalities. She is currently Chief of Staff for State Senator Robert Jackson, who is himself a friend and supporter of NYC Opt Out. And I'm going to turn it over to her to hear where we are and where we should be going. Thank you, Joanna.
Thank you. You know, I'm, I'm often already frustrated with the system in just listening firsthand from teachers and mental health experts. I think the only way that we have to go is actually turn this upside down and opt out. And it really is a question about what kind of education we want for our children. Do we want the kind of education that is wholesale, that is not individualized? And this speaks to who our children are not? Or do we want the kind of education that our children are entitled to deserve and then honors who they are holistically? Not on paper, not what people in a room decide the perfect child or student or adult tomorrow should be, but who our children actually are? And especially after a pandemic. What we're hearing is especially egregious because it is a moment to reimagine what education, trauma-informed education should look like for our children. It is a moment for us to hit pause and actually say, what is normal? And to me, normal is non-existent. It bothers me, and it's a little bit triggering when I heard from the teachers and heard percentile because I, I think instantly, who are we comparing our children to? It, it bothers me when I hear this level, so level, first grade, second, third, because then I ask myself, level, like who's, who is building that block? Who is deciding that this is the, this is how far our children have to go? If we look at, for example, the state test as an example. So a, as Chief of Staff in our office, we represent districts all the way from Marble Hill, which is a little north of the northernmost tip of, of Manhattan, is the beginning of the Bronx, down to Chelsea, down to House Kitchen. But the biggest school district we have is School District Six. And the majority of students are children with I E Ps or children who are English language learners. And with the state test, when, over the years, when there were more and more children of color kind of reaching that threshold, than what I call man-made, what I call policy-made, what I call made by this, you know, this students of color are kind of deficient mentality, the bar is raised. And this is how I feel. These are artificial bars that we are creating for students that have already been traumatized. And when you look at one of the, one of the tests that, that was demonstrated, all these, what was listed, Acadia's, I think, of what is not acceptable accommodations. I, I think of District Six. Again, the majority of students are children with special needs or children who are English language learner. Then why the heck are we wasting time maybe considering these kinds of non-assessment, non-useful for, for anything? We are dishonoring who our children are, and we are dishonoring who our teachers are. Because when we're talking about trauma-informed classrooms, we also have to take into consideration the educators that are in those classrooms pulling themselves up because they've been traumatized as well in this process and really offering of themselves to the children in, in front of them. I want to read and, because as an, as an office, we did some research and we, we reached out specifically to the New York Mental Health Counselors Association. And first, I, I just want to quickly go through what their thoughts were, specifically on DESA. First, they, they start, you need to know that this screening instrument was not known to us prior to our reviewing the materials. So until we told them about it, they had no idea about this. You know, much like parents that have no idea what's going on in terms of their children's curriculum. Class size, we, let me start. We are concerned with the time it takes to administer the screening tool. It seems unlikely that a teacher could easily answer each of the 43 questions in 10 minutes. If the teachers rush, the validity of the results come into question. Class size in the often crowded New York City schools could hamper the ability of a teacher to easily answer many of the 43 questions in the screener. If so, the validity of the findings would be questionable, and recommendations for services for some students might be made without merit. Our board was concerned with what is done with the results of the screenings, and who would make decisions regarding the referring children for services? This seemed unclear and especially of concern with the huge caseloads of school counselors and school social workers. There are so many variables that could affect the results of DESA, including class size, teacher familiarity with all the students in the class, especially during the first two months of the school year, the difficulty of knowing middle and high school students well enough to competently use the screener and the context in which the results will be interpreted. We could see how the DESA could be a valuable tool given stricter guidelines regarding class size, the time to administer the screening tool, and clarity on who would interpret the findings towards the achievement of more defined goals, goals. But based on what we know, we can neither endorse nor reject the use of the DESA. This, this is a, a group of mental health experts. And I want to, I want to point to the fact that our office introduced a bill to give the right, the right for parents to opt out of testing. It's not even giving the rights, the right to, to opt out because that right already exists. All it does is they codifies, codifies the right for parents to opt out. And it is the same things with these tests. There is no wholesale curriculum in the Department of Education. These, these tests, I'm going to call them, these are tests, are not required by the New York State Department of Education. This is determined and was predetermined, when I say predetermined, prior to children coming back after being absent because of the pandemic to be instituted. Don't forget that our children went, I believe, two years without having to take the state test. And this is just another loophole to get children to take our state tests. If you are being denied, well, let me rephrase because you cannot be, then you cannot be denied as your child's parent to opt out of a test. If you are told that your denial is not being accepted, you have to take it to the school leadership team. You have to take it to the C E C, and you have to take it to the superintendent's office. I also ask, it doesn't matter if you are not in the senator's district. I also ask that you email me if there are any issues with a superintendent, a principal, or anyone in your child's school. Or in this is, this actually also goes for teachers who don't feel supported, to email me, the senator's office, about these concerns so that we can bring it up to the Department of Education. I know the Department of Education is here. They are not strangers to hear from our office. But especially with what we heard, it is absolutely necessary and critical that we opt out en masse of these tests. I will put my information in the chat. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for that. I just want to reiterate that point. Like, you can't say it any more clearly. It is imperative that we all opt out. We, we refuse to let our children have this test. I know that there's been some in the chat about if you are getting pushback from your school, if your school has your child sit for the test anyway, and the different places that you can take that. We are also going to be providing our information at NYC Opt Out. You can always contact us, and we provide support when those kinds of pushbacks are happening. I'm going to lift some questions that we had throughout the night into the space. I will say that here at NYC Opt Out, we do not have the answers to some of those questions. That is not for lack of trying on our part. But as you're starting to see, it's been very difficult to get a central DOE to engage with us and to tell that. And I know that some members of the DOE were on the call at the beginning of the night. I don't see so many of them hanging through with us to the end, but I might have missed you looking through everything. Certainly, if you are here, raise your hand. Let us know if you want to help suss out the answers to these really important questions that parents and educators are asking tonight. We would love the information from you. And if you're not here, or you don't feel like speaking up, rest assured, we will continue getting in touch with you and, and asking these questions to see what's going on. One big one that I want to lift up is this question about what happens to children who have I E Ps or 504s that mandate that they have accommodations for testing? It seemed very clear that at least on some of the three kinds of academic testing, that their accommodations were not being honored. Now, I can say, like, I have a kid who gets extra time on testing. And if that, if, if that child's academic, if we, if we said that it was actually measuring, measuring anything real about their academics, and they were being denied their legally mandated time to take that test, I would be pretty upset about that. And if the DOE is spouting a line about how we're really focusing on kids' mental health as we welcome them back into spaces, and what we're welcoming back is, into is a test where their accommodations, their legally mandated accommodations are not being honored, the question is, how is that, how is it legal? How is it defensible? And what can be, what can be done? So thank you, Stephen, that you've been taking notes, and escalating these to face leadership. We, we would like perhaps to go ahead and set a meeting. We haven't had a great luck with interfacing with face leadership, so we would like to get something more definitive. We also just want to lift into the space that there is a wide difference in how opt, opt outs are being honored or not honored, right? We saw in the chat earlier in the night that some people are being, are being told that there is no opting out of these tests, which is actually not legal. It is the parent's legal right to refuse to have their child take any of the academic screeners or the DESA screener. What is the DOE doing to make sure their messaging lets parents know? That is true of the state test at the end of the year, and it is true of these benchmark assessments. And how is the DOE protecting parents' rights? We would like to know. What is, what is the DOE doing? For, we have schools right here in District 15 that we're hearing in the chat where parents' refusal letter has not been honored, and a child has been forced to sit for a test when the parents have clearly stated that they do not want that to happen. What, what is the DOE doing? What is, how can the C E C help lift this up? Is there a measure that the C E C can take? Can you pass? It's not a declaration. I forget what it is that you call them, but I know that the C E C has them. Sorry, I just blanked on that. A resolution. Thank you for that, C E C 15. A resolution that helps lift this back up into the, into the space. So that is two huge questions about accommodations and about, about refusals being honored. There has also been some questions about the results. Like, we heard a very mixed bag of the results being available, both to teachers and to parents. What is the DOE's word on that? Like, if these tests are supposed to be so great that you get immediate results, why are, are teachers saying that they still don't have the results a month later? Why are parents having trouble seeing the results? Laney asked so many good questions about what is happening with the data. Where is the DOE's answer to us about what's happening with the data? Where is the guarantee that our children are being protected, that their data and their privacy is being protected? Where is the DOE? Could be the general question. Where, where are you? And, right, so we're hearing from C E C 15 that Executive Superintendent Watts has insisted that all Brooklyn North students are mandated to take these tests. That is not our understanding of our rights as parents, and it's time for the DOE to be loud and clear in the defense of parents' rights. And until that happens, we will be loud and clear ourselves. To that end, we have a number of actions that we would like to take. Don't get scared. It's not, they're easy actions to take. We're going to put some links in the chat. And I think we also have a slide that we're going to share that shows what you can do. But for one thing, we want to just thank everybody for coming tonight. We want to thank C E C 15 for hosting us. We want to thank the amazing interpreters for, I know it's been a lot of dense information. Thank you for hanging with us. Our fantastic educators and experts on our panel who took time out tonight to share this information with all of us. Thank you, thank you, thank you. If you haven't signed up to receive updates from NYC Opt Out via email, please sign up with us. We're going to put it in the chat how you can do that because we, we will update you, and then you will know how to get in touch with us should you need support for refusing these tests or refusing the state tests, anything like that. We want you to tell every parent that you know that this is happening in the schools and that they have a choice about whether or not their child participates in it. Many, 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 many parents don't even know that this was happening. Please tell them all. And there's a link, if we can drop it again, because I know the chat is going. As I mentioned earlier in the night, we have a survey that's going out to educators so that we can really get a snapshot of what is happening in the classroom when these tests are going on. And if you can share it with educators in your lives, your child's teachers, friends that you know who work in the school system, please share it as widely as possible and encourage others to share it because we really want that, that true information from our stakeholders, the people who are tasked with administering these tests and who are supposedly benefiting in their classroom instruction from the data. So the link is in the survey. If we could drop the NYC Opt Out website into that, go check it out. It also has a letter that you can send to council members on the Education Committee and to our mayor-elect Adams, making sure that they know that this is a problem and that we are paying attention and we need some answers. There's a template. It's right there. There's a link in the chat for it. Please, 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 go ahead and send it. You can also tweet it at them. They're very active on Twitter. Keep sending it. Definitely sign up at NY, at app.nyc.com with us so that we can stay in touch with you. This recording is going to be available on C E C 15's website. We will also make it available, if that's okay, on our Opt Out NYC webpage. Share it with folks who don't know. Let's, let's raise our voices. Let's get this knowledge out. Let's refuse to let our kids participate in this, in this testing operation and, and come back, and we'll help you do it all again for the state tests later in the spring. We'll be back with that. Thank you all. Thank you. Thank you all so much for joining us tonight. Have a wonderful night.
Jody, I think we're just going to try to find the slide that has the actionable items on it.
Great. I have it here as well, I think. Let me see if I can find it, if I could share it all. So let me just get in the right.
Yeah, if you could, if you could share it, I think you can share your screen. That would be amazing.
Yes, I'm just looking for the right.
I just want to say thank you also to our interpretation team. We appreciate you so much. And thank you again to Kamala Carmen of New York City Opt Out, Jody Drosner Alfrin, our amazing host, co-host, Jessica Smith, Evelyn Israel, Leonie Hamison, Joanna Garcia. Thank you all so much for your brilliance. And I see we have the slide up now. So we dropped some of those links in the chat. And again, we will be sharing the recording of this video, and we hope that you all will share it with people that you know and share it with your school leadership teams, please.
If I can add one more thing, which is, it's important that you do.
it's important that you do try to follow us on social media or sign up for a mail list or both, because this situation is constantly changing. There are constantly, as you can see, unfortunately, tests being added, changes made to tests. One thing, if you follow us, that you will, that we will be publicizing just in a, in a number of days, is that the state is, is, is proposing certain changes in terms of our status in state tests. So we really need to keep on top of all of this, and there's really enough to keep on top of without the city having gone and added in all of these things. I'd like to just add one more thing. If you add up the academic screeners from kindergarten to twelfth grade, if you have a student throughout, and if they have to take these tests throughout, that's thirty-nine additional tests just for iReady or Acadians or MAP. Thirty-nine over their career. And that's in addition, as Jody said, to state tests, Regents tests, new learners, you know, English as a second language tests, et cetera. Thanks, everyone, have a great night.
So much. Have a wonderful night, everybody. Thank you for coming.